Good evening and welcome to our Town Council Workshop for May to set our agenda for June. Before we move into items for discussion, I'm going to ask Mark Atkins to do our prayer. And Rex, will you do the pledge, please?
Father, we've just come to you again today, Lord. We thank you for another day here in our town, a beautiful day. And Father, we know we take so many of those things for granted. Let us always be mindful of the gifts that you give us each and every day and you continue to bless us with. Go with us as we make the deliberations of the town here tonight and make the decisions that helps our citizens and all of our staff here, employees, Father. Father, just continue to watch over us all and continue to guide and protect all those that serve our town. We ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Rex. Mark, public comment. The town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the Town Council or Board or Committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy. Speakers are limited to three minutes and additional comments may be submitted in writing. Any public comments tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Item two is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease with Conica Minolta for replacement of the copier at the court clerk's office.
You're willing to help me out?
Yeah.
So, we currently have a contract with RJ Young for a copier that's nine years old. Looks like July 1st, it's going to go up over 9%. Carl has put me in contact with Conica Minolta and you guys have already approved us entering into a contract for a new copier instead, starting July 1st, but with the fear of tariffs raising that quote up by July 1st. I just asked that we start it in June instead. I already have the money to take care of that, so it's really not going to be an amendment of any kind.
Okay. Any questions for Lisa? Thanks. Okay. Item three is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a rental agreement with the Minnesota Science Museum for the Amazing Castles exhibit.
Mayor Council, thank you so much. Front of you is the exhibit we'd like to bring in, in January of next year. It'll be here through May. They gave us a great rental rate, normally 15,000. We're getting it for 10,000. They gave us a $5,000 discount. It is something we had in the past. It's very ornate, a lot of dress up, a big giant castle. And so, the kids really loved it when we had it here a couple of years ago. And so, just like to recommend approval.
Questions for Jimmy on this?
Will this be an inside or outside exhibit?
They're all inside.
Inside, inside to Soak, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we'll put that on the agenda. Thanks, Jimmy. Approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the material bid tabs for the gas, water, and sewer departments for fiscal year 2026.
Hey, how are you?
Great.
This is our annual bid of materials, gas meters, gas materials, water, and sewer materials.
Questions for Mike on this?
I've just, I've got one comment up. This looked like it took a lot of work. I appreciate it that you bid all these items out and selected the items, you know, that really gave the town the best cost from each bidder. And I know a lot of them can't meet the timeline or won't hold their bid.
Appreciate that.
Okay. And we will put that on the agenda and move on to item five, which is approval of the bid tab for the Polbonne Installation for the Holbrook Farm for Equipment to Spread the Wastewater Treatment Plant, Treated Sledge During the Summer Months.
Yes, ma'am. This is an approved capital budget item in this year's budget. Currently, we have the spreader truck and the backhoe that just sits out in the weather and that's not a good thing. So, we've finally gotten to where we can get this and got bids and we recommend the low quote.
And that sludge goes to the farm during the summer months. During the winter months, we have to take it to the landfill.
There's times during the winter we can go there, but not often. It's mostly summertime.
Okay. Questions on this? Okay, put that on the agenda and move on to item six, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomason Hutton for the design permitting easements and construction admin for the Lowry Street Bridge area sewer line upgrade.
Yeah, so what this is, this is the last portion of Basin A. We're doing the art-funded rest of Basin A right now. This is the bridge crossing and this requires TDEC permits and a lot of different things in design. This will be a tough one, so we need to get this designed and be ready to go for this. And this will be for next fiscal year for the design.
Questions on this?
This project will be located exactly where?
I'm sorry?
Where exactly will this project be located?
This is the Harts Branch Bridge where the sewer line crosses under the bridge and the bridge area on Lowry Street. Yes, sir.
Questions on this? Okay. Item seven is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Thomason Hutton for the design bidding and construction admin for gas line relocation within the Waldron Road Widening Project in Laverne.
Yes, Laverne is widening Waldron Road from Rock Springs to Center Point approximately 14,000 feet. And we're going to have to relocate a lot of the six-inch PE gas main through there. And Thomason Hutton will be helping with the design and getting all the stuff in the road project with Laverne.
Questions on this? For those that don't understand, talk a little bit about with it being in Laverne while we're doing that.
So, we have a franchise agreement with Laverne where we have gas there. Within the road project, you know, we met with legal, talked about this. We have to stay within the road project because if we don't, then we're going to be responsible for getting easements outside of the road project. So, us staying within the road project is less costly for us and you get one, probably one big contractor that's going to do everything, so.
Any questions on that? I just didn't want people to be confused while we were.
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
Item seven, nope, item eight, is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Verizon for the Nissan tank antenna.
Yeah, this is a lease agreement for Verizon on the Nissan tank. It's $30,000 a year for five years and then it will extend for four additional five-year periods. Legal worked on this with Verizon and Kevin and his staff at the water plant have reviewed the plans and it won't cause us any issues at the tank.
Questions for Mike on this?
So, no telemetry issues?
Shouldn't be any issues at all. Kevin's approved their final design, so he was good with what they wanted to do.
Question that you may not be able to answer. What is the big tower that's right there by the ice thing? Is that not, you know what I'm talking about?
I do, but I don't know what it is. I don't know who it is.
I was just curious why they didn't, because it looked like more than one on that.
I don't know. We've been working on this, or actually, legal's done most of the work on this for six, seven months trying to get this thing right and get what they need to do.
Okay. Item nine is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual agreement with MR Systems LLC for the preventative maintenance and repair services for the water treatment plant for 2526. And we do have the addendum A that was sent to us by email.
Excuse me. Yes, I apologize. I inadvertently left the addendum off. It was supposed to be there. So, this is our service agreement. It was MR Systems. Now, they've gone to InfraMark is what they're called now, but they do handle all the SCADA stuff for the water plant and the wastewater plant. The annual fee was $32.88 and it's going to $3,600. And then, there's different cost levels. If they have to come to the plant and do certain things, we have emergencies, there's a cost schedule in there for that as well.
Questions on this? Okay, we'll move to item 10, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2025-2026 annual bid contracts for chemicals for the water and wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am. These are the bids or the chemicals that we did have to rebid this year. And this is what we're recommending for the water plant and wastewater plant.
Questions on these? Okay. Item 11 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the 2025-2026 chemical contract extensions for the water treatment plant.
And this is, like you said, extending the contract. They are holding the same price on these chemicals.
Questions on the chemicals for the water plant? Okay, item 12 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with DRT BioSolids for the lagoon sludge removal for the water treatment plant.
Yes, ma'am. So, what we did this year, we're going to have to do both lagoons instead of just one lagoon due to the high flow we experienced last summer. And these lagoons are basically filled up with lime solids. So, we're going to do both this year. There is an approved list from TDEC that these get applied to. We're doing subsurface injection, which we started last year, which eliminates any runoff or any issues like that. So, Kevin does have an approved list from TDEC and he rotates that list every year. We'll see what happens the following year. If we can go back to one lagoon, we're not sure. Depends on flow at the plant.
Questions on this?
They dispose of their own sludge.
I'm sorry?
Do they dispose of their own sludge?
So, what happens is during the process, the lime deposits go into these lagoons. This company will come in, clean out one lagoon while we're still operating off the other, take it to the farms and they'll subsurface inject it into these farms, a list of farmers. It doesn't go to the Holbrook Farm, but there's another list of farms that they have to be TDEC-approved to do this that are on TDEC's approved list that we do.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with IMNE relative to the electrical mechanical maintenance contract for the water plant, wastewater plant, and the distribution collection systems for 2025-2026.
This is our annual contract. IMNE was the only bidder that was qualified. I think somebody else bid, but they didn't meet the specs. So, it's to handle all pump repairs, motor repairs, any type of mechanical stuff like that with both plants and water sewer maintenance.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension for the annual concrete contract with Rollins Excavating Company LLC. Hey, Tom?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, this is our annual contract, concrete contract with Rollins. It's initially approved on June, started June 11th, 2024. This is a one-year extension to June 30th, 2026.
Questions on this one?
And did we get that contract? Was that part of the additional information we got on Rollins?
Yes, sir. And Dave and I had a conversation that moving forward, we'll make sure, especially since you've not gotten to see the contracts before.
Right, right. I don't need to be voting on something I haven't reviewed.
But it was in that email, so you'll have it. Yeah. Okay. Item 15 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement for roadway patching with sessions.
Yes, this is another annual contract extension. Let's see, it was originally, this will extend to June 30th, 2026.
Questions for Tom on this?
The only question I have, and I talked to Dave about it, is this contract extension, we're developing a new bituminous index for current time? Or are we using a bituminous index from the previous contract? Or will this even have a bituminous index?
Well, anytime there's asphalt involved, the state of Tennessee has a monthly number for bituminous index, so that changes month to month. So, if one month, price of oil, a barrel of oil goes down and we do road repair, asphalt price goes down. And then, if it goes up the next month, the price goes up next month. So, it is one of those things that does fluctuate based on market conditions.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out what the base index is going to be, what maybe from their previous contract that we're extending or from this date forward. Currently, it's 600. Previously, it was like 628. So, I'm just trying to figure out where the base index is going to be established.
Well, I think the base would be, the base would be the original contract, but like I said, it changes month to month.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out what base index. Was it 628, do you know?
It's whatever, but I think what he's saying is it's whatever it is for that month.
Yeah.
From that.
Yeah, so even if the base index was 600 or even 628, the start of the contract when we first executed.
Right, right. And the differential, whether it goes down or up, will be whether it be increase or decrease.
So, if it goes to 598, then we're going to do 598.
I understand how it works. I'm just trying to figure out what the base is.
Yeah. It would be based on the original contract.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yeah.
At that time?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions on this one? Okay, item 16 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with roadway management technologies to perform continuous data collection on our roadway systems to develop a roadway lifecycle management plan. Tom, I think this is one we're all excited about.
Yeah, this is, we're going to be partnering with RMT. They were the lowest responsive bidder on this project. They'll be installing some video cameras on some of our town vehicles, most likely just our brush trucks as they travel pretty much every street in Smyrna. It'll be a continuous evaluation of the asphalt throughout the town and it'll give us a, what it'll do is produce a GIS map indicating which roads are ones in the highest need of milling and resurfacing and which ones are the lowest need. We'll be able to use that to identify roadways that we do need to put on the milling and resurfacing list from year to year.
Talk a little bit, since our brush truck doesn't do pickup in commercial and industrial, what are we going to do about hitting those roads as well to make sure we're covering those?
Yeah, we're just, we'll work with the RMT to see if maybe there's some other streets, some other vehicles we need to put equipment on just to make sure we do get full coverage of it. And as we put it on GIS maps, if it identifies any roads that we missed, we'll just make sure we go back there and hit those as well.
So, the end product that we'll get is interactive map or a GIS map? Will there be any report that kind of prioritizes those roadways for us or will it be us developing the report based on the grading system?
Well, the data coming out of it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to provide us with the condition of the roadway and therefore, not only will it be a visual representation through GIS, but it will be a linear report of the grading of each one of those roads that will help us, as Tom said, determine which, how we prioritize the milling and resurfacing as we go forward. All right. Yes.
Other questions on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda and we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with OR Colan Associates to acquire right-of-way along Old Nashville Highway for a sidewalk.
So, as you know, that section between St. Michael's and St. Luke's on the west side is, that's the one section that does not have any sidewalks on. It's very steep condition. We talked to OR Colan, who's currently doing work for us on Florence Road sidewalks, give us a bid to be able to acquire the right-of-way. We need to build a retaining wall to cut back, to build a retaining wall on Peel's property, so we'd be obtaining a small amount of right-of-way from about 13 different tracks and to be able to move that dirt back, build a retaining wall, and the sidewalk to be able to have that connectivity for people.
Will we be reinstalling that wrought iron fence that's along those two wet poplars or those Bradford pears?
That's, well, I've had a lot of questions about that fence and who's responsible for it. I've had a survey to check and it is on private property, so currently. Now, when we take a section of the back part of Peel's property, we'll be obtaining that as right-of-way and what we would most likely do is replace what's there, not necessarily with wrought iron, but we would have some type of fence on the top.
Well, it's an aluminum type fence, yeah.
Yeah, some kind of, we would work together on what would be affordable and be able to put back for people.
I had the same question, Jerome, because that's pretty crowded right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the HOA that did that?
There's no HOA in there.
There's not HOA in there? Oh, the developer did? Okay. Other questions on that? Then we'll move on to 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual contract with Pope Striping for roadway striping.
Yeah, so currently, we're using Kerr Brothers. We went out to bid, Kerr and Pope were both responded as bidders. Pope came in as the lowest responsive bidder on our annual striping contract.
Questions on this?
I just wanted to thank Tom for, Dave, for, we had a request to get a double yellow line at the Oaks and appreciate y'all looking at that.
Okay. Moving on to item 19, it's approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Hawkins Paving for the annual milling and resurfacing.
I think we're going to pull that at this time. We're going to go out and rebid that one. We're looking to get two contractors lined up on that one, so we're going to be rebidding that one soon.
Okay.
And I'd just quickly to explain the reason for that. So, as we go ahead and execute that contract for the pavement assessment, that's going to take about 60 days probably to get done. And by the time we get the analysis and everything, now we're about 90 days, right? So, now you're looking at July, August, September, when you start to get into those colder months. So, we're going to miss a little bit of the front part of the season or we'll call it the paving season, but we want to make that up once it thaw's out, right? So, I think it's a better approach for us to have two contractors at our disposal.
They have to be TDEC approved to do this that are on TDEC's approved list that we do.
Other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item 13, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with IMNE relative to the electrical mechanical maintenance contract for the water plant wastewater plant and the distribution collection systems for 2025-2026.
This is our annual contract. IMNE was the only bidder that was qualified. I think somebody else bid, but they didn't meet the specs. So it's to handle all pump repairs, motor repairs, any type of mechanical stuff like that with both plants and water service maintenance.
Questions for Mike on this? Okay, then we'll move on to item 14, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension for the annual concrete contract with Rollins Excavating Company LLC.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Yes, this is our annual contract, concrete contract with Rollins. It was initially approved on June, started June 11th, 2024. This is a one-year extension to June 30th, 2026.
Okay, questions on this one?
And did we get that contract? Was that part of the additional information we got on Rollins?
Yes, sir. And Dave and I had a conversation that moving forward, we'll make sure, especially since you've not gotten to see the contracts before.
Right, right. I don't need to be voting on something I haven't reviewed.
So, but it was in that email, so you'll have it, yeah. Okay, item 15 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an extension agreement for roadway patching with sessions.
Yes, this is our another annual contract extension. Let's see, it was originally, this will extend to June 30th, 2026.
Questions for Tom on this?
The only question I have, and I talked to Dave about it, is this contract extension, we're developing a new bituminous index for current time? Or are we using a bituminous index from the previous contract? Or will this even have a bituminous index?
Well, anytime there's asphalt involved, the state of Tennessee has a monthly number for the bituminous index, so that changes month to month. So if one month, price of oil, a barrel of oil goes down, and we do road repair, asphalt price goes down. And then if it goes up the next month, the price goes up next month. So it is one of those things that does fluctuate based on market conditions.
I'm just trying to figure out what the base index is going to be, what be from their previous contract that we're extending or from this date forward. Currently, it's 600. Previously, it was like 628. So I'm just trying to figure out where the base index is going to be established.
Well, I think the base would be, the base would be the original contract, but like I said, it changes month to month.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out what, what base index. Was it 628, do you know?
It's whatever, but I think what he's saying is it's whatever it is for that month.
Yeah.
From that, from that.
Yeah, so even if the base index was 600 or even 628, the start of the contract when we first executed.
Right, right. And then differential, whether it goes down or up, will be whether it be increased or decreased.
So if it goes to 598, then we're going to do 598.
I understand how it works. I'm just trying to figure out what the base is.
Yeah. It would be based on the original contract.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know.
Yeah.
At that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, other questions on this one? Okay, item 16 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with roadway management technologies to perform continuous data collection on our roadway systems to develop a roadway life cycle management plan. Tom, I think this is one we're all excited about.
Yeah, this is a, we're going to be partnering with RMT. They were the lowest responsive bidder on this project. They'll be installing some video cameras on some of our town vehicles, most likely just our brush trucks as they travel pretty much every street in Smyrna. It would be a continuous evaluation of the asphalt throughout the town. And it'll give us a, what it'll do is it'll produce a GIS map indicating which roads are ones in the highest need of milling and resurfacing and which ones have the lowest need. We'll be able to use that to identify roadways that we do need to put on the milling and resurfacing list from year to year.
Talk a little bit, since our brush truck doesn't do pickup in commercial and industrial, what are we going to do about hitting those roads as well to make sure we're covering those?
Yeah, we're just, we'll work with the, of RMT to see if maybe there's some other streets, some other vehicles we need to put equipment on, just to make sure we do get full coverage of it. And we, as we put it on GIS maps, if it identifies any roads that we missed, we'll just make sure we go back there and hit those as well.
So the end product that we'll get is interactive map or a GIS map. Will there be any report that kind of prioritizes those roadways for us? Or, or will it be us developing the report based on the grading system?
Well, the data coming out of it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going to provide us with the condition of the roadway. And therefore, not only will it be a visual representation through GIS, but it will be a linear report of the grading of each one of those roads. That will help us, as Tom said, determine which, how we prioritize the milling and resurfacing as we go forward.
All right.
Yes.
Other questions on this? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda, and we'll move on to item 17, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with OR Colan Associates to acquire right of way along Old Nashville Highway for a sidewalk.
So as you know, that section between St. Michael's and St. Luke's on the west side is, that's the one section that does not have any sidewalks on. It's very steep condition. Talked to, got with OR Colan, who's currently doing work for us on Florence Road sidewalks, give us a bid to be able to acquire the right of way. We need to build a retaining wall, to cut back, to build a retaining wall on people's property. So we'd be obtaining a small amount of right of way from about 13 different tracks. And to be able to move that dirt back, build a retaining wall, and the sidewalk to be able to have that connectivity for people.
Will we be reinstalling that wrought iron fence that's along those two up poplars or those Bradford piers?
That's, well, I've, I've had a lot of questions about that fence and who's responsible for it.
Right.
I've had a survey to check, and it is on private property, so currently. Now, when we take a section of that, the back part of people's property, we'll be obtaining that as right of way. And what we would most likely do is replace what's there, not necessarily with wrought iron, but we would have some type of fence on the top.
Well, it's an aluminum type fence, yeah.
Yeah, some kind of, we would work together on what would be affordable and be able to put back for people.
I had the same question, Jerome, because that's pretty crowded right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that the HOA that did that?
There's no HOA in there.
There's not HOA in there? Oh, the developer did? Okay, other questions on that? Then we'll move on to 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an annual contract with Pope Striping for roadway striping.
Yeah, so currently, we're using Kerr Brothers. We went out to bid, Kerr and Pope were both responded as bidders. Pope came in as the lowest responsive bidder on our annual striping contract.
Questions on this?
No, just wanted to thank Tom for, and Dave for, we had a request to get a double yellow line at the Oaks. And I appreciate y'all looking at that.
Okay, moving on to item 19, it's approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Hawkins Paving for the annual milling and resurfacing.
I think we're going to pull that at this time. We're going to go out and rebid that one. We're looking to get two contractors lined up on that one, so we're going to be rebidding that one soon.
Okay.
And I'd just quickly to explain the reason for that. So as we go ahead and execute that contract for the pavement assessment, that's going to take about 60 days probably to get done. And by the time we get the analysis and everything, now we're about 90 days, right? So now you're looking at July, August, September, when you start to get into those colder months. So we're going to miss a little bit of the front part of the season, or we'll call it the paving season. But we want to make that up once it thaw's out, right? So I think it's, it's a better approach for us to have two contractors at our disposal to try to get, you know, as much done as we can once we get those results. But I think those results, I'm sure we'll have more discussion about milling and resurfacing once we get them, so.
And I appreciate that because a lot of times, we're kind of at their schedule of paving. If they've got a big job, then we're kind of waiting for them to come in and pay. But if we've got two contractors.
There's quite a bit of catch-up going on this spring, this summer. You know, with, we've got a lot of paving going on right now in the city. I know it's a little frustrating from a traffic perspective, but it's been needed for a while, and I think people are going to be pleased with it after it's over with, so.
The weather's been kind of working against us for about, really for about eight or nine months. We had ice all winter. We had several situations with salt in the winter. And then ever since spring's come, we really haven't had three or four good solid days in a row. So like Enoch Springs, I know they had to suspend paving yesterday because of rain. They were out there ready to start, and the bottom fell out. So, I mean, it's just kind of a losing battle some days.
Okay, we'll move on to 20, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Sweeping Corporation of America LLC for our street sweeping.
Yeah, so let's see, we, we've been using Sweeping Corp. of America for, as long as I've been here, they're about the only ones who actually ever bid on the project, who have bid on that. But they'll sweep all the state roads and certain select other list of roads. We also have them help out during like fireworks, July 3rd celebration, be able to clean up after that. But this is just a contract extension with them to extend out for an additional year.
Questions on this? Okay, item 21, approval of the terms of a revised open door policy for inclusion in the town employee handbook.
Good evening, Mayor Council. What you've got is a revision to our existing open door policy, which affirms the town's commitment to open communication by encouraging employees to raise concerns, seek clarification, or provide feedback through appropriate channels without fear of retaliation. So the revision specifically to this, to this update is really clarifying the process for escalating concerns involving appointed officials or elected officials. So those are the main adjustments in this. I did have two small edits to what you've got. One is I neglected to include the phone number for the Tennessee Attorney General's office. That has been added. And then on the actual work form that supervisors would fill out, I did remove the word anonymous on.
Under open door policy?
Yes, under open door policy. It just says it's recording form, instead of this anonymous recording form. It's intended to not be anonymous. Obviously, if we get an anonymous one, we'll treat it appropriately as well.
Questions on this?
I appreciate the work on this. I know that we kind of identified the gap in the last year or so, and we've talked about how do we fix it? And I think that this is the, the right approach, so I appreciate it.
I agree with Steve on that, and for working on this, it's necessary.
Yeah, that made difference.
Go ahead.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. The, what I appreciate about it, it also addresses the town council, the town attorney, and the town manager. A process to go by which employees can also go and file a complaint if, if it's warranted against any of those, and I really appreciate that.
And Jerome, you weren't part of this, you weren't here then, but that was one of the, as Steve talked about, the gaps that we felt like were there that needed to be addressed. And so I too appreciate all the hard work that you all have put in on this, so. Will this just be added to the handbook, or will we get it out to employees to let them know that there has been addition?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll email the policy out to all employees. We'll put the reporting form on our, on our core platform that all employees have access to. And then when we do our next revision of the handbook, we'll, we'll put that inside there.
And in addition, I did an all-hands meeting. I did it virtually in, in the chambers. I did that back when we did the pain class study. And so we talked about doing another one in July. This will be part of that subject matter. Plus, I'll be able to go into some of the budget highlights with the employees as well and maybe some other topics. So I plan on doing those about maybe three times a year, and I'll include this discussion with that.
Perfect. Other questions on this? Okay, item 22 is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a one-year professional services agreement with Rex Gaither for financial consulting services.
I'll take this one, Mayor. That'd be a little awkward for Rex to do it. As you know, Rex is, is at the point of retirement, and that'll be next, next month. So I'd like to ask the council to consider, obviously, keeping Rex on in a consulting capacity, just to assist us with the transition that we'll have over the course of a year. I think we did put in a optional one-year renewal option, just in case we need that. But I think it would be good for continuity and obviously his, his, the knowledge that he has and the expertise that he has over the course of his career would be, would be helpful, so. And with that, I did save it for the, for the end, but I'm going to say it now anyway. But I do think we're going to have some really, we're in really good hands moving forward. As Sierra Lowry has been named as Rex's successor, as the, our next finance director. She went through a formal recruitment process. We had a lot of good candidates, but by far, she was the most impressive, not surprisingly, in that interview process. So Sierra, looking forward to working with you, and congratulations.
Dave, how, how do you envision that working? Is this going to be as needed? I'm assuming it's not a 40-hour-a-week contract, so.
No, no, it's not.
I'm assuming it's as needed, billed by the hour kind of arrangement?
Exactly, yeah.
Every time Sierra picks up the phone.
Yeah. Start the timer, Rex, as soon as you answer.
Well, we are definitely sorry to see Rex go, but also happy for you. But Sierra, we're super excited that you're going to be stepping into that role, and we all have the utmost confidence in you and your abilities. And I think the other directors and department heads would say that as well, so we look forward to it. We'll move on to item 23, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for fiscal year 25-26, and this will be a second reading.
Mayor Council, the ordinance and budget for fiscal year 25-26 are submitted for your consideration. Additional changes to the budget from first read to second read are reflected. I have included a spreadsheet detailing changes for your convenience. And also for the public, the, the budget has been posted to the town website, and we ask for your approval of this ordinance.
Questions for Rex on this? We've been through it a couple of times. Okay, then we'll move on to consideration of the ordinance adopting the property tax rate for fiscal year 25-26, which is also a second reading.
The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 25-26. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 52.57 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property. We're asking for your approval on this ordinance also.
Questions for Rex on our tax rate?
Rex, how many years have we held our tax rate?
Pardon?
How many years has it been since we've held our tax rate?
2014 was our last increase. We've recertified, I think, three times.
But made it revenue neutral?
Yes.
Okay, so the main thing out of that is no tax increase.
Amen.
Item 25 is consideration of an ordinance to approve year-end budget amendments for the fiscal year 25, and this is a second reading.
These are the proposed year-end budget amendments for fiscal year 25. These include the year-end transfer of excess surplus funds to the capital project fund, town manager recruitment, staff development and training, service awards and recognition, unforeseen repair and maintenance and employee expenses. Several capital projects, primarily Cedarstone Tennis and Pickleball Project, equipment for a fire truck, computer upgrades, and building improvements. We're asking that you approve these budget amendments.
Questions on the budget amendments that we've looked over? Okay, item 26 is consideration of resolution for plan of services relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property on tax map 51 parcel 8.11. And I'm also going to talk about 27, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation R1 zoning of property on tax map 51 parcel 8.11 requested by Weekly Homes LLC containing 6.04 acres. And the property's located at 6304 Lee Road, and that's a second reading. So Kevin, I'll let you talk about both of them.
Yeah, the first item, the plan of services, this is, puts in writing the services the town would be providing if the council chooses to annex this property. In this case, it is all services except for water, which would be provided by Consolidated Utility District. The planning commission did hold a public hearing and did recommend approval of that plan of services. Then the annexation is for a little over six acres of property on Lee Road to be annexed into the town's zone R1. This is consistent with our land use plan in that for that area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of RM and the county and PRD, which, about three different PRDs in town. This is kind of the remaining piece of property that was a part of the Hidden Springs development. When it hit, Phase 3 of Hidden Springs was annexed back in September. This land was not annexed at that time with the plan for the seller of the property to build a house on there. That is still their plan, but they do wish to connect to our sewer system. And so they have requested annexation to be able to make that connection. Again, the planning commission did recommend approval of this as well.
We talked about this at our last meeting, but are there any additional questions?
Will the Lee Road improvements front this annexation area as well?
I believe it will, yes. And we have already annexed the road.
And where will they be serving sewer to off the adjacent development?
I believe, I believe it will be through that, through that, through that development, yeah, because sewer, I don't have my pointer, I'm sorry.
To the west?
It's coming from the, the development to the east.
East.
And going through the property to the north, and then the two to the west there. That's where the sewer is coming to for those, that development. So it'll be through that development is where the sewer would connect to.
It's, it's refreshing to see an R1 annexation. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, item 28 is our housekeeping item that goes along with our annexation. Anything from you all under other?
Yeah, I've got a few things. I just want to make the council aware that we received a notification from the Army Corps of Engineers regarding Percy Greasley. And it's a, it's a required notification that they, that they put out. And I, what, what they're really looking to do is just change the timing of when they adjust the pooling. So staff is evaluating that. We're able to provide comment. But you may see that out in the news or something like that. But all they're really looking at doing is just adjusting the timing of when they do the winter and summer pooling. So we'll evaluate that for any feedback that we need to provide. And that's it.
Okay, I do have something I want to bring up under others. Something that we've kind of been seeing a lot of on social media is the solicitors that we have in town. And so Dave, I've kind of had some conversation with you and Jeff both. We're hearing kind of that, we're having some that are pretty aggressive solicitors with wanting you to purchase their products and that sort of thing. So Jeff, can you talk a little bit about what our current policy is for solicitors? And then I know that you guys have kind of been looking into that.
Yeah, sure. So currently, if you're doing commercial related, which is what they've been complaining about from what you advised me. There's a permit process, and so they will come into the treasury and they'll get a permit, a background, background check. And we'll have the, the timeline of when they're able to go out, I mean, days-wise, that they're able to solicit. They're supposed to carry that on them, so that if a citizen or officer needs to see that, that they can produce that they've got that permit for these commercial purposes. One thing to address before I get into the other, so to address the question sometimes that someone won't leave my home, that is already covered under the criminal statutes. So if you tell someone to leave and they do not leave, then you need to call the police, because that is, that is trespassing. Not just them walking on there, but if you tell them to leave and they, and they don't leave. However, this has been an evolving area of the law for quite some time, because soliciting does involve First Amendment protections. And so there's even different circuit splits across the federal districts with it. However, I do believe that the mechanism that several communities are using, that we'll be able to use, which is a no solicitation list that the town would keep and maintain. That would be given out to the solicitors whenever they apply for their permit, especially when they take it with them.
If they can apply for it.
Yeah, yeah. And so obviously, we would set up the logistics of that. It's going to take more with, you know, with Dave and whatever departments will be keeping up with that. But I suspect it would be through email, in person, all those types of ways that a resident could get on this solicitation list. I do not recommend an hour, even though that seems normal and common sense. That's where a lot of the First Amendment issues come into. So those that just do not want to be bothered with on the no solicitation list, those that receive permits for commercial purposes. If they violate that, and there's substantial reasons to believe that they are violating it or continue to violate it, then their permits could be suspended or revoked for that.
So a couple of questions that have been asked is, okay, what happens if our neighborhood has a no soliciting policy at the front of the subdivision?
Yeah, that, that's the HOA, and of course, the town would not be able to enforce HOA-made rules.
Okay.
So then it would be individual.
Correct, correct. And if, once they get on this list, and keep in mind, this is, this is not for campaigns, this is not for religious purposes, those types. This is only for the, the commercial speech is what we're speaking of. And so if they're on that list, then they should not be visited, and they can also stick out a sign saying no soliciting. But, but to be on our list, you would need to contact us to make sure that you're, you're placed on that list, once we, once we have it.
Once we get it in place.
And that would be an ordinance change for two readings.
So let me follow on to that. So a subdivision that doesn't have an HOA, but has a no soliciting sign, it's really.
It's for each individual home, not for an area.
Okay, so it basically has no real effect. It's just, we're letting them know we prefer not to solicit, but there's no real enforcement.
Correct.
Until you say, leave my property.
Right, the individual homeowner, but I'm talking about for the neighborhood.
So currently, for those that have solicitors that are on property, that come to their property, one of the questions they can ask is, do you have your permit from the town of Smyrna? And if they don't have a permit, they can call the police department and say, there's somebody soliciting that doesn't have.
That's correct.
A permit.
Are they required to show that if the person asks for it?
Well, obviously, there's no mechanism for a citizen to make them show them. They can, they can ask for it. But if, if they won't, or they suspect that they don't, then ask the police to, or let them know they're in the neighborhood, and they can check.
You mentioned hours a minute ago, but is there, does the ordinance talk about eight to six?
We can't.
We can't do that?
No, I could spend an hour going over what kind of case law is, but I know that you may not enjoy that. But I just do not recommend putting the hours, because you have to show that criminal activity has been happening because of solicitors in the town of Smyrna and have those kind of statistics. And so far, I've not seen any, any that I've read in the cases. There may be ones that didn't make it to the appellate level or Supreme Court. But I've not seen a jurisdiction that's been able to substantiate that when there's other more narrowly tailored ways, such as calling the police if they're trespassing, those types of ways.
So ask them about the permit. If they ask them to leave and they don't, they can call the police as well, so. Okay, will you all work staff-wise to look at the no soliciting? Will you all work staff-wise to look at the no soliciting list that we can, and then whatever mechanism we're going to use for that to be housed and bring back to us whenever you're ready at a workshop?
Yep. And we've already begun drafting the ordinance, so hopefully we'll have that to you by this next workshop.
I have one more question. This may be overreaching just a little bit, so I'll let you tell me that, Jeff, but can, can we, Dave or your office, reach out to specific companies that may be doing this excessively right now and just let them know that we've received complaints and we would prefer that they adhere to our ordinance? Just going to give them a warning that we're receiving complaints about them. Specifically, there's some security companies that have been going around and staying at people's, I've heard stories of them being at their house after nine PM knocking on the door, and it's a specific company that keeps coming up over and over again.
We, we have.
You've reached out to them already?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Other questions on solicitors? Jimmy, anything tonight? Charles, do you want to come give us some updates? Would you, would you please?
You did ask.
You're right, I did.
But since you asked, I will. Update right now, Washington Street, like I said, no the one week that we had the track closed down. That was very frustrating for commuters and businesses, but doing that one week saved us four. And it was much safer for the public and the contractor. So the curbing sidewalks are all in, the new pedestrian island, which will be much safer for people crossing that wide four lanes there at the roundabout, that you do have that safety island in there. So that will be much safer, and like I said, the sidewalks and all the pad gates that CSX has put in, it's going to make a much safer crossing there.
And when should that be, when should that portion?
That, that portion's done. We're just going to be waiting till utilities finishes all their service connections in, and then we will come in and mill, pave, and stripe just the roundabout section and Washington Street down to Lowry. Well, that's our only part that we will be doing.
Will the crossings be stamped asphalt as they were before?
They'll be more, yeah, they'll be more of a pad, brick pattern, there'll be a paver this time instead of a stamped concrete, they will be actual pavers. So we will use paver, so they'll be more substantial and they won't wear down like the stamped concrete did.
It should be pretty.
And the, be also, the same pavers will be in the roundabout area now. We're just waiting to get that subcontractor approved by T-DOT for them to come in and do that work.
And that project's going to be finished the same time Tom's project is going to be finished with the speed humps, and so it'll all be done at once or no? Come on up.
Mayor, I've got a question for Charles accordingly. I've had several citizens ask, what's the intent of expanding the roundabout? Maybe you can explain that so that...
It really didn't expand. It's in the same area, but instead of having that at-level apron that had kind of worn away, bringing that curb up, it defines the lanes better and it keeps traffic moving in those lane areas and not kind of short cutting through there, so you have a better flow of traffic. It also slows traffic more because you are having to go around it more instead of trying to cut it short. So it's safer and it's also for speed reduction.
And also, they'll be able to roll up like a box truck or a semi or a bus, they'll be able to roll up on that inner part.
Right. That, like I said, once we get the pavers in that inner part, you won't have that two and a half inch, right, wheel backfill there, and it will be level, and they are traffic grade, so.
Okay.
Any vehicles that are larger, that need to roll over it, they can safely do so.
Yeah, I've had several people ask.
Well, and, and I didn't notice either. I mean, technically, we weren't supposed to be driving on that, the park that had the, the brick part, yes, and so.
And that's one thing, the design engineer found that when they've studied it, that how they were cutting through there, and you had such a wide area, you want for sure if they're, which direction they were coming through or not for other traffic to yield. So this better defines it, and like I said, it also addresses the speeding issue through the area.
I think sidewalks and the pedestrian arms and the safe zone on the crosswalks is going to be a huge improvement.
Right, and CSX, they wanted that kind of pedestrian safety island because they can take that last 10 foot off that one arm that comes down, that make it much, because that's constantly breaking or malfunctioning the signal system. So once they can remove that extension on there, it'd be better for them too. So it, but like I said, with the sidewalk and the pad crossing gates, I think we've really got a much safer and easier commute from Front Street down to Lowry.
Well, I seen you out there studying it the other day, so thank you.
Yeah, well, I was, I was out of town when a lot of that was going on, so I was on the phone. So my wife now knows what my day looks like, sitting in the car.
Don't sit back down yet, but Tom, if you can talk a little bit about the portion of Front Street there in front of, going on down in front of the...
So we did a traffic plumbing design for the downtown area, the strip between Division and College Street on Front Street, and we had bid that out three times. We did not get, we got some extremely high bids. We looked at the project, it really includes three major components. It was the utilities portion, which is currently was going all right now with Mike Strange, and the second portion is like milling resurfacing, and the third is concrete. So what we decided to do to help save money, and it's much more labor management driven, is that Mike and Mark, they're overseeing the utility installation part of the project, and once that's complete, and I think that's looking for around mid to late June to be finished, once that's done, then we'll come in there with the stormwater, do, do some stormwater work, then leave, come in and do milling and resurfacing, leave, and then come in and do the concrete work. So there's going to be, it's going to be a lot of piecemeal work with contractors to prevent contractors from having to work on top of each other in such a tight space where you have to kind of piece us out a little business. We're almost acting like the general contractors on this project, just to be able to save the cost.
Timeline-wise, what are you thinking to be totally finished with all the projects?
You know, I hate to give a timeline or anything like that, because really, it's up to, it's so piecemealed that, and with the rain, I think they're supposed to be finished a few weeks ago with the utilities, but because of all the rain, it's pushed it off a couple extra weeks. Not throw them under the bus, but you know, that, that's definitely held with the project, and now we're looking at some downtown events with Depot Days and things like that coming up. So we want to avoid those as much as possible, so we're going to take breaks when those events are going to go on, then we'll come in, do stormwater work, like I said, then do milling and resurfacing, and then the concrete. So it's going to be very piecemealed, and it's going to be stop and go on a lot of it.
But we're trying to get those projects as close together as we can.
Yes.
Okay.
Just to minimize as much congestion, issues with the businesses and drivers in doubt.
And that was going to be my question. I know we've been communicating with the businesses, but the paving of the trench where the water line's gone has been a huge improvement, and then coordinating with the events that we're having downtown.
Yeah. I just want people to know, it is definitely a lot of moving parts and a lot of different projects, and we're trying as hard as we can, one, to do right by the businesses, but also get a really good-looking product that we all can be happy with.
Which helps the businesses.
It does.
Tom, I want to commend you on learning to not give timelines.
Thank you. I can learn.
You learn through ITS. ITS, you learn.
Almost done.
Okay. Since he threw you under the bus, Mike, what do you, what would you like to add?
Did you hear it backing up?
I did, I heard it backing up.
Waterline, it's been a slow go and all the rain has not helped. So here's what we're doing before the event, I think on the fourteenth, they'll have all the main in.
Simplicity Smyrna returns to the Depot District Saturday, June fourteenth from five to nine thirty. Joining us in the heart of the Depot District for a family-friendly event featuring live music, vendors, and more.
Well, he doesn't have to do his slide now.
That's right, that was his only one.
So they'll have all the main in, they're going to go ahead and put binder down. They will street, but streak, sweep the street that week. Tom, Mike Moss, and I will meet out there and make sure that it is up to par. Mike's happy with everything, Tom's good with it. They will not be able to get the service lines tied in before simply Smyrna. There's seventeen or eighteen of them, they'll come back after the event, start tying service lines in. I'm not going to give a timeline because I just learned from Tom.
Will some of the side streets then be closed, or will they all still be open for Simplicity Smyrna?
They're going to put binder in everything.
Perfect, okay. Okay.
The one thing I want to point out about the water project is it really has economic development impact because so much of what some of the businesses want to do down there has been hindered by the fire flow, and this is going, this is going to resolve that.
Yeah.
Yes, and this links to a bigger project for that area down there for fire flow, but when Tom was doing the road project, we thought we need to go ahead and do this so we don't come back a year, or two years, three years later and tear it up again.
And that's an existing two-inch line, right?
It's six on, on Front Street, but there's some twos that come off of it that are going away as well.
So a lot of old cast iron pipe down there too, right?
Uh, I don't know if it's cast iron, but it's old ductile, I think, and it's, it's too small for the fire flow with the new fire flow requirements and everything. So there'll be other things happening here within the next few years, but it won't be on Front Street, it'll be behind.
While Mike's here, any questions about any other projects that we have going?
The reuse tank looks good.
Sure does.
At Motlow.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Yeah.
And I think Motlow and MTSU are both happy with it too, so. Yep, okay, I think you're, is there anything you want to add since it's your time?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Tom, anything, anything you want to ask of Tom of any of his projects that are going? Talk a little bit about Jefferson Pike at Lowry, that one's yours.
Oh, with the T-DOT?
Uh huh.
Okay, so right now, there's in the middle of construction on that one. I think it's going to go on until summer of 2026. We'll be basically installing a traffic signal at Jefferson Pike and Lowry Street at the same time, just south there a little bit. They're going to be taking those, all those four different connections that are currently between Sam Ridley and Lowry Street, the on-ramps and off-ramps are going to bring those together, so they're going to just be two on-ramps, off-ramps combined together, and they're going to be signalizing those as well. Like I said, it's going to be finished in about a year, well, they say about a year in three months from now. I don't mind giving a timeline on that one, because that ain't my fault. They'll be done in about a year to fifteen months from now, and then we'll be adding three more traffic signals into our system. Right now, we've got, I think, fifty-eight, fifty-five traffic signals, so we'll be adding those three. We'll also be adding the one at Hickory Grove Road on Jefferson Pike, and probably eventually the two at eight forty in Jefferson Pike, so.
Speaking of timelines, will any of those be added to the ITS system?
My question.
Uh, we're, we're going to, let's see, I think, because we do have fiber out to Fire Hall Four, we're going to be able to connect the traffic signal at Hickory Grove into that system. The ones out at the eight forty, we'll probably have to use cellular system to bring them back. It wouldn't be cost-effective to run fiber all that way out there unless maybe someone else, it would be a part of another project, but we'll be adding those in, especially if we annex the, to the other side of eight forty. Because right now, we annex to our side of eight forty, and those signals are technically in Rutherford County.
We need to make sure in looking at those projects out there that we look at that in, within their projects possibly?
What about the internal signals that we have? When, when are we going to have that connected to the ITE, the fiber?
It'll be this summer.
The summer?
Yeah, and we'll have, we'll have, I think, fifty-two of the signals connected, and then there's a couple others that are kind of outliers that we're going to use cellular systems to connect back in, get all fifty-five on.
And then we're still doing the Rocky Port, Camavel, the Lee Road, and the Cook Road, and Cook Lane.
To that paving and all?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question related to the Jefferson Pike, to the Jefferson, that area, are you doing any kind of concessions with the airshow coming up, or it's just going to remain looking like that for now?
It'll probably remain looking like that, you know, and I know that the paving is, they've been slowed down on their paving as well. They'd hope to be done by the end of this month, but, you know, weather conditions pushed, put them off quite a bit. We are out there, you know, mowing and everything and prepping for the airshow as much as we can do on our side, getting litter picked up, so we'll have it look nice for the airshow.
But since it's not been turned over to us yet, there's not much we can do with their portion?
Not really.
Yep. Okay.
The bridge at Nissan in forty-one, I know it's not our project, but do you know, if they're finishing that up, it looks like they've got...
The milling resurfacing on there?
Where they were doing the bridge work.
The bridge, I'm not sure about that one, if you know.
By Smyrna High School.
Charles knows about that.
At Chicken Pike.
Wait, I, I still have a question.
Yeah, don't go away.
On that one, now, like I said, it's T-DOT project, they came in, milled and resurfaced, the bridge approaches, then they came in and replaced the expansion joints, and that should be about wrapped up now. They're maybe doing some more work underneath the bridges, but most of the top work is done on that one.
Did they not put beams underneath it?
I'm not sure what they were doing under, what they were working on, any expansion, probably part of the expansion joints there, maybe the pads for the expansion joints that they were working on underneath, and then redid the joints up on top.
When is the project at International Highway and Sam Ridley scheduled to start?
Talked to them yesterday, they got, get that loaded into Edison before they let me put it out to bid, but everything is good to go on it, it's just they got to get it loaded for my, the CEI on it. The CEI will be working for T-DOT. We have put our deposit up for that work, so it will not bill back through us and just bill directly through T-DOT's on-call. Just waiting for them to give me the word that they're on board with the CEI, then we'll get the bid book posted on the T-DOT website and on our website and be ready to go.
Really at the end of the year or something like that, right?
Hopefully within the next month or so, at least get it out on the bid, and you had to bid it for twenty-three days on the T-DOT website, so that's another month. So hopefully in a couple of months, we can get a, get a bid on it and get it started.
Some of these other projects are going to be finished, finishing up, and I wouldn't want to run out of orange barrels.
Oh, there'll be, there'll be plenty still around.
There's no shortage of orange barrels around town right now.
No, no, there's plenty.
Did you have another question for Tom?
No, that was it.
That was it, okay. Tom, anything you want to add?
Nope, I think I'm good.
Good. Any other projects you want to...
Just like Steve was saying, the other thing we have going on right now is just the final paving on Eden Springs. Like I said, the weather has just wreaked havoc with our schedule on that. We finished from Florence up to Nissan, they're currently working between Nissan and Lowry. Hopefully tomorrow, Monday, we should finish that section, and then we'll move across to the other side from Lowry down through Hazelwood. All the, had some, couple of utility cuts in there that have been patched and ready to go, so get the final resource on top of them, so we should be good on that.
Great.
Anything else?
Anything else for Charles?
All right, thank you.
Carl? Good? Jeff? He didn't want them to show him up, right?
No, I did just want to share some good news from a personnel standpoint. Our selection and retention is improving since the compensation strategy was adopted by the town council back in March. So just to share a few bits of information with you, in January, our department posted twenty-four jobs that needed to be filled. In February, that was up to twenty-seven, some of those were seasonal positions for the parks. In March, it dropped to twenty-one, and April nineteen, and this month, almost complete, six jobs are posted. So we are seeing some success with that new strategy, and I hope that continues going forward. We're pretty much fully stepped at the fire department, heading in the right direction at the police department recently. I believe we hired some officers that were already post-certified, which was not something that normally happens, so seeing some really positive things happening with that. So I just want to share some good news with you.
I'm also hearing the number of applicants and the quality of the applicants in which we're getting is significantly improved.
Things are going well.
Great. Questions for Jeff? Thanks. Chief? Anything tonight? Okay. Mike? You've already had your turn. Kristy? No. Tom? Kevin?
I'm good.
You didn't even get much airtime tonight.
I'm good.
Rex?
I'm good.
Sierra?
I'm good.
Todd? Heather? Chief? Amber?
So I was going to touch on the solicitor's permits really quick. They all come through my office. I will say, in the past month or so, between me and Marcia down at the police department, we've processed probably over sixty solicitor permit applications, but other than just a couple one-offs, they've all been for... But other than just a couple one-offs, they've all been for, uh, the Vivint security. So if you have others out there that aren't with the Vivint, definitely ask them for their permit.
Perfect, thank you. And the individual, not the company, has to get it because the background check has to be done on the individual, correct?
Usually it's the company that reaches out to me and then they coordinate all of the applications, getting those submitted properly to me. And then I work with Marcia at the police department to make sure they're all vetted.
What's the fee for a solicitation permit?
Fifty dollars. And it lasts for six months per applicant.
Dave?
Already did.
Already did, yours. No slides tonight?
I, I've got slides. Got slides, we ready for that portion?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, just wanted to congratulate the Smyrna Public Library on the ribbon cutting that they had in the storybook trail. Um, I was out there for that grand opening and it was extremely well attended. Um, so it was great to see a lot of folks out there. Dolly Parton was there in a cardboard cutout, but nonetheless, she was still there. Um, but a great, great partnership with our park staff. Uh, so I do want to thank, uh, Almer Pope, Gary Stallone and Bud Mayberry of our Parks Department, who helped install those kiosks, or whatever you want to call them, uh, along the way on that trail. So great job, great event and a really cool addition to that area.
Those, I just want to point out, left side of that picture, Mike Sparks is in the very far left. And of course, his mouth is open. Yeah, he's probably singing, probably not talking.
Um, let's see, last week was Public Works Week, so I just want to give some information about our excellent public work crews. Uh, they work hard, do the best to ensure that we, uh, that, that we provide the best looking streets out there that we can with the resources that we have. And in honor of National Public Works Week, we want to, we've been highlighting various departments. So you've probably seen those posts that, um, Heather's been putting out there on Facebook and, uh, Instagram. But we maintain over six hundred lane miles of public roads, restriping roadways, fixing curbs and repairing a hundred and sixty-plus miles of sidewalks. Uh, the stormwater department maintains all ditches and stormwater pipes, oversees the construction of new commercial residential industrial developments. They're also responsible for, uh, mowing, uh, and servicing all the public right of ways. So I just want to thank, uh, the outstanding team we have within our Public Works Department under Tom's leadership. Thank you, Tom. And, uh, we had an excellent Memorial Day ceremony. We did, uh, change venue, um, last week as it was calling for a washout. We knew that once we did that, the weather would be fine and of course it was. But nonetheless, we still had a really great turnout. I think we had over a hundred and twenty people show up for our ceremony, which was fantastic. Um, and it was a great and meaningful way for us to pay tribute to the brave men and women who have served our country and paid the ultimate sacrifice. Um, we had the V F W participate. We had, um, who was Darrell Burke. We also had, uh, Colonel James, uh, Ridings, who was.
Did a great job.
Excellent, uh, did an excellent job with his, his speech, his first one, by the way.
That was his first speech?
First speech.
He did a great job.
Yep, he did a great job. And, um, we also had retired U S Army Bansman, uh, Robert K. McElroy. He offered to play taps. He just so happened to be at the senior center fundraiser, asked him if he'd like to attend our ceremony. And he said that he wanted to participate and so, uh, he did an excellent job as well, so. Also want to thank our fire department, the event center and Parks and Rec and admin staff for putting that on. That's all I have.
Jeff, for you?
Uh, first, Amber, I'm sorry, I think I said Treasury and I meant to say Town Park on the solicitor permit. The only other thing I have is today, my wife Katie, uh, has turned, I think, thirty years old. So happy birthday to her.
Did you get her a gift?
I did.
You did?
I did.
Good. Okay.
Yes.
Jerome?
I have a slide, yes. So, um, join us for the seventeenth annual Boat Day, happening Saturday, June twenty-first from nine A M. to one P M. Be featuring free kayak and canoe rides for all ages, including you, Steve. This familiar, this family-friendly event educates the community on the importance of water quality and boat safety. Smyrna Outdoor Adventure Center staff will be on hand to provide instruction on operating the canoes and kayaks and information about their paddle adventures program. Multiple agencies will provide fun and educational hands-on activities for children. This is a great event. It's, um, it's held at, um, Sharp's, uh, Jefferson Springs, uh, boat ramp and picnic area. It's a, it's a big event.
Are we doing with Martha's Court, did you say that? Are we doing with Martha's Court? Yeah, that was our first year last year and it, yeah, great.
Dave and I discussed that town manager has to be the first one in the water and that he is expected to be.
I like that idea.
In, in a, in a boat, not necessarily the water.
I said the water, you know?
Well, just so you know, that almost happened to one town manager. And then did y'all let Chief Goss know about the squirrel costume?
No, I wanted to.
Oh, you're going to talk about that later?
We will.
Congratulations, the new one, the new one gets the squirrel costume.
The fan quit working last year.
Raquel?
Um, join us in congratulating Judge Brittany Stevens for her recognition as a twenty-twenty-five Rutherford Athena Young Professional nominee. And that was on the sixteenth of May. And we had a group from the town to go in support of her, um, for that event. And then secondly, we have the Smyrna Juneteenth Committee presents the twenty-twenty-five, twenty, yes, twenty-twenty-five Juneteenth Celebration in Smyrna. Please come out and enjoy this free event on Saturday, June the twenty-first at Hilltop Rosenwall Park. It will be from two P M. to eight P M. It is a family-friendly event. It will include food trucks with local vendors, activities for kids and more. And that's all I have.
Great, Chief?
Okey-dokey, I'm going to repeat myself. June fourteenth, five P M. to nine thirty P M. on Front Street and down in the roundabout area. Front Street will be closed, is sponsored by Carpe Artista, is the Simply Smyrna Celebration. Free admission, live music, eighty-plus vendors, there'll be wine tasting, craft beers and food. Uh, June fourteenth, five to nine thirty P M., family-friendly event featuring live music, vendors and more. I repeated myself.
Multiple times.
Multiple times, that's exactly where I drive the point home. Um, before we meet again, uh, my lovely young daughter will have a birthday and that will be on the seventh. And then I don't think I'm going to be able to make the meeting that month. And so three days, four days later, my son will have a birthday, so I want to wish him happy birthday. And, um, you know, going back to that Boat Day, I, y'all were talking about Brian getting the costume. But, you know, we've also got the Beaver costume that the new councilman always wears, so.
That'd be a negative.
And that's all I've got.
We affectionately call it Bucky. Again, that'd be a negative.
Oh, Jerry?
I got a slide.
The, um, SOAC celebrating the beginning of the summer with the Schools Out Festival on Friday, May the thirtieth at twelve oh P M. through three P M. Uh, come enjoy the food and the games and if you need some more information, contact the SOAC at, uh, six one five four five nine nine seven one oh. So, uh, feel free to come out, I think you'd have a great time. Um, also just want to say congratulations to Sierra, uh, good to have you in that role.
All right, I also have a slide, um, Nissan, uh, thanks to the Nissan team, uh, for coming out and, uh, helping to clean up Gregory Mill Park and the Wilderness Trail. Uh, thanks to their efforts, ten bags of trash were collected, numerous lambs and debris were cleared from the trails, keeping our park safe, clean and beautiful. So thank you, the folks over at Nissan. Sierra, congratulations, uh, I know you're going to do a great job. I, uh, Dave, when Dave called and told me, I, I was, the way he started the conversation, I was nervous he was fixing to say some other name. And I was like, oh no, no, and then he said Sierra, so I was like, great, so congratulations. Um, today is Hal Offlin's birthday, so happy birthday to Hal. And, um, before we come back, um, Mark and I have a birthday we have to celebrate. Um, both Pam and Connie have a birthday on June fourth. Um, so happy birthday to them early and, uh, me, Mark and I have been reminding each other of this for the last few years.
So we don't get in trouble.
So we don't get in trouble, exactly right. And then, uh, last, uh, I think the last thing is, uh, keep, uh, Jerry and his wife Patty in your prayers. Patty's been, uh, going through some medical issues and just want to continue to pray for their family.
Agreed. Mark?
Uh, there's a slide coming up. We're counting down to one of our favorite events of this year, any year. Uh, join us for the Independence Day Celebration, Thursday, July third is the date. Lee Victory Park, Lee Victory Recreation Park is the location. The festivities will start at five P M. and the fireworks will take off at dark, so you don't want to miss that. Bring your family, your lawn chairs, it'll be a full night of fun, food trucks, music and a great fireworks show. Uh, I don't see anything on here about a rain makeup day, do we know what that is?
July fifth.
July fifth, just in case, we're getting a lot of rain, so. Uh, Sierra, congratulations, Rex, congratulations. Uh, retirement deserves congratulations and, uh, to Judge Stevens on her recognition as well. Uh, while I've got just the podium just for a second, I want to say a shout out to my three grandkids, Leighton, Lenny and Ledger. I bet they're watching, I think Mimi's got them watching tonight. They're having Camp Zimi at our house tonight, which is zippy, Mimi, it's Camp Zimi, get it? And so, uh, I know they're excited to be there, they always enjoy it. So you guys mind your Mimi tonight before I get home and here's why. Mimi's got a birthday coming up, I'm not going to tell you how old it is, would never do that, she'll be Medicare eligible though. Happy birthday.
Um, a couple of items that I have, so, um, I just want to give a shout out to Margaret Ellison and Francie B. Smith. They were recipients for Mayor for a Day, which was an honor through a recent school-sponsored program. And I got to spend, um, the day with these two young ladies. We had a great time and thanks to all the departments that helped us, um, with this day. We really appreciate it and, um, I was excited when we were leaving to come back here to town hall. And I said, oh, I bet your mom will be here when we get back. And they said, ah, I don't want it to end yet. So, um, I think they enjoyed the day, but they had lots of great questions. Our sixth annual Top Gun Night Run will take place on Friday, I don't know how to make a note before I forget. On Friday, December twelfth at seven thirty P M. at Lee Victory Recreation Park. Oh, oh, sorry, Septem-, thank you, September. The exciting three-point-seven mile certified course runs through the airport, the golf course and ends at the memorial. Um, we'll have live music, food and it is a really fun event. And we are going to have some really cool things since it is our sixth annual. If you have not gotten signed up, I recommend you get signed up. Huge shout out to TriStar, um, Foundation for the fifty thousand dollar grant from, uh, H C A and for our exhibit. It will be on display until September seventh and the name of the exhibit is Happy Brain. And it is an interactive experience for children zero to five. We appreciate your continued partnership. Um, the Blue Angels will be returning in just a few short weeks. They'll be in town June seventh and eighth. Day passes and tickets are, aren't available through the town website, but they are through the Airshow Network and, um, through thegreattennesseyareshow.com and tickets are sold online only. Steve, um, talk a little bit about the company you all talked to, uh, when y'all were in Vegas, about the number of people that.
Yeah, it's, um, I don't, I don't really know what they officially do, but they're called Pacer AI and they do, um, they use cell phone and cellular record data to capture, uh, counts and specifically, uh, traffic patterns and, and how people come to or from events. Um, they, they were able to tell us, um, we asked them to drill in to the airshow Saturday, the, um, June, whatever it was. I think it was third or something, two years ago. And, uh, just kind of give us the demographics and the numbers on what happened in Smyrna for that date. And they, they have this for towns all over the United States, for the entire United States. So they picked Smyrna, picked that day, pulled the date up and it showed there were a hundred thousand visitors to the town of Smyrna that were not residents of Smyrna. So just on that one Saturday of the airshow, a hundred thousand visitors. Um, it was very interesting. It also can tell you, um, if you pick, we actually drilled down a little further and picked the airshow specifically. And it told us of the people that were at the airshow, where they went first, like when they came into the town. Where did they come from? Did they come from their home? Did they come from a restaurant? Did they come from a gas station? And then also, where did they go when they left? And about thirty percent of them went to and from their house, but the other seventy percent went to local businesses. They went to restaurants or stores or gas stations, which means they're spending money. And so that's a hundred thousand visitors, a hundred thousand guests into our town. And the amount of income that that generates for our businesses and our local business owners, um, as well as the chains and everybody else that visits is huge.
Well, and that was just Saturday, so you probably had the same thing on Sunday too.
Well, that, that was just one event, there was actually, it was a little unique. We picked the wrong date the first time and we picked the date after that la, from last, from two years ago, which happened to be Simply Smyrna. And surprisingly, the numbers for Simply Smyrna were eighty thousand guests. And, uh, we were kind of surprised by the number of people that were in Smyrna the, the Saturday after the airshow. Uh, so when we have these events, you know, you may think, oh, there's only a few thousand people downtown, but there's actually a much bigger impact than you realize.
Well, and what I hope, I know sometimes there's frustration with traffic and all that, but these are the kind of people we want in our community, they're coming in, we're not having to educate their kids, we're not having to do any of that and they're spending money here, they're spending the night and then they are going back home. So please be patient, um, over the weekend while the airshow. That, just keep the taxes low, that's right. Um, a couple of other events I just want to give a shout out. Um, some of us attended the Smyrna High School graduation and, um, we enjoyed doing that. And, um, we were at, we would have actually gone to Stewart's Creek, but we had a council meeting that night. So congratulations to Smyrna High School, Stewart's Creek and also Lancaster for those graduates.
Can, can I add something there?
Sure.
Um, that's the first time I've gotten to sit on the platform for a graduation like that. And, uh, it was really interesting and I actually did not think I was going to enjoy it as much as I did. Um, but it was interesting to me that every single kid, the five hundred or so that graduated, uh, some of them walked up with sad look on their face or they looked like they were mad at the world or they looked like, I don't want to be here. Um, some of them, you know, they had their, their, their little ditty that they did as they walked up or whatever. But every single one of them without fail, when they heard their name called and they got to walk across the stage and the place is clapping for them, every single one of them, their faces changed to a giant smile. And it was just, it was, for me, it was very positive to see the youth of, of our town that sometimes we see them and we think, you know, why is he driving so fast in our neighborhood? It's got to be a sixteen-year-old kid or whatever. But they're, they're, they're somebody kids and they're the future adults of our town and to see the pride in their face, it was, uh, it was good to see.
I agree. Um, Transportation Policy Board, um, we had that meeting in Nashville and got, talked a little bit about the tenure plan and quite a few things we had going on, so it was a really positive meeting. Conducted Dave's evaluation tonight. Dave, we appreciate you and what you're doing for our community. Um, uh, you've, you've done a great job and we appreciate it, so. Chris, are you in the control room? Chris, will you come out?
She said no.
That's what she's like, no.
Chris, come out and be on camera, come on, come on. I know, come on. So Chris is always behind the camera, but I want to, um, tomorrow is Chris's last day with us. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you've. day with us, and I just wanna say thank you for everything that you've done, and, um, you make all of us look good, and we appreciate that, but we're sorry to see you go, but we're excited for whatever your next chapter brings, but we just wanna say thank you for helping to get our message out to our citizens and beyond, so we appreciate that.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Um, last thing I have, y'all were talking about birthdays, there's a big birthday in our family, on June fifth, my older sister, Leanne, will be turning fifty, so I wanna wish Leanne a happy birthday!
I know that matters, right?
So, uh, June fifth, if you all see Leanne out in town, make sure that you wish her a happy birthday, so it's the, it's the big five-oh for her, so.
Mayor, I, I forgot, I wanna recognize Kelsey, she, uh, she's been licensed as a professional architect, she's completed all the educational requirements, the work experience, and passed like five rigorous tests, so just shout-out to her.
Absolutely, that's a huge deal, so congratulations to Kelsey, I know y'all are proud of her.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay, nothing else, we're adjourned.